Our problem is we don't have a main street.
That's it. That makes all the difference.
We have all these businesses and they go down.
And they have their own town high school.
Yes, they do.
And that's where it makes community. That's a big difference, you know?
Same thing with the days when we did them.
Yeah.
Or Indiana.
Yeah, Betty.
Yeah, Betty.
I think there are most retired and part-time.
Councilwoman Martine.
Jim Cole. We got seven.
I have 6:58.
I got seven.
It's women at eight.
I got 7:01. All right, Guy McDonald. All right, Guy and I. All right, after much debate up here, we've decided it is 7 o'clock. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and have a call roll, please.
Ms. Martine, back in chair.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And with all meetings, we will start with a moment of silent prayer. Now, all please rise and join in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to your first meeting of October already. I do not have any additional agenda items. Do want to let council know, looks like we have a pretty short agenda, but would like to have a 30-minute executive session for attorney-client. I'm at the end of our meeting, so. The first thing now for council to consider is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the September 15th City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I was going to make a different motion.
Well, if you second it, we can discuss it, or...
Okay.
Do you want me...I guess if they're so second, I can just rescind it. Okay, I'll take my back, my motion.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to table this item and do our minutes next time because I...you know, since the minutes are...Jamie, I think you did a great job for not having a recording, but there are some things that are not correct about my statements in the minutes, and I'd like to have some time to go over my notes and everything and write out what I think I said at that meeting. So I'd like to table this till next time, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
I can do that, I guess.
May I...I'm sorry, may I ask a question? I thought that it just wasn't being able to be televised. Are we saying we don't have a recording of it? Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
So we're tabling the consent agenda, first and second.
That would be helpful to me.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is appropriations ordinance 15-19 in the amount of $1,434,596.29.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 15-19.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments on appropriations ordinance 15-19? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same as sign. And there's city requested appearances. This is something that I wrote about in the mayor's corner in The Breeze, and it's something I want to do. At the September 1st council meeting, we had several employees, mainly members of our Bel Air Police Department, that were recognized for assisting an elderly gentleman with a financial hardship that really helped this guy get back on his feet, and in my opinion, really took care of making sure he had the necessary services that we should all have. This act of kindness really moved me, and what I would like to do is start a mayor's community cares certificate of thanks. The reason for this is to simply recognize people who help out their fellow citizens. It's my hope that we can recognize someone every single month. After the...our city staff members, the very next meeting, members of our Bel Air Lions Club are here and presented a check to the city for AED. And that is what...that is something that I hope, this is a lob, I just want to encourage others out there, that we might be able to recognize you here, because I know we have a lot of good people in this community. So as a...kind of as our sample here to get it started, because it is important for us to assist our neighbors whenever they need help. My first presentation is actually going to be to a council member, to Peggy O'Donnell. Recently, we learned that a citizen had issues with a utility bill that was addressed by a policy change at the September 13th meeting. This parent...this citizen's parents had lost her parents at the beginning of the year and had incurred higher sewer fees due to the old policy. Peggy volunteered to cover the overage in light of her situation and did this out of her own pocket. So I want to present this certificate to you, Ms. Peggy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And to do that, while the amount doesn't matter how small or how big it is, I'd like to ask our citizens that if you have received assistance by a neighbor or have assisted a fellow citizen, to let City Hall know so that hopefully we can recognize you as well, and we can continue this act of goodwill throughout our community. So that is what I had of myself, and I was a city requested appearance, that was weird. So at this point, citizens concerned, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Now is your time. Seeing none, want to move to reports, and a few items that I'd like to report on is the first, you may have noticed our flags are at half-staff outside. That is, the President of the United States has asked that we kind of do that across the country in light of the mass shooting deaths at the Community College in Oregon. So would just ask we all remember that. Seems like we're talking a lot about gun violence and other issues up here, and that is why they're at half-staff for that. So then another bit of news, and then I want to report some really, really stinking awesome, good, cool news that all of us up here need to high-five each other over. But first, before we get to that, in regards to the open council seat, became aware of this after our last meeting, when they changed all the voting and everything, they made a process change that this spring on how an open council position can be filled. The new legislation states that the governing body must make the appointment within 60 days of the resignation. That's appointment and approve, or hold a special election. At this point, I know we had said, been reported that we would receive applications up until, I think, September or October 14th. Today is October 6th. I have spoken with a handful of people who have expressed interest. I do have a couple of top candidates in mind at this point, and I do, I am speaking with someone else later this week. Have received a number of letters of interest, but council, we need to appoint this at our next meeting. So since this is kind of speeding it all up, what I'd like to do is have a workshop for other reasons sometime next week, and hopefully I'll let you guys know who it is that I'd like to appoint, and kind of where we are on that process, so that then we can make the decision at the next...at the meeting, which would put us within that 60-day guideline. And again, this is a state legislation that came down to us. Now, the third thing I'd like to report is that the city makes land interest payments twice a year, once in May and once in November. This is over $1.2 million that we pay on land interest. We make principal prepayments when funds are available. Happy to say that we are going to make an $825,000 principal payment next month, guys, and that's due to land sales in our industrial park. This is going to reduce the interest payments by roughly $1 mil each year, and that is exciting news for all of us up here. So I did want to close with that, and also remind everybody that next Saturday, we have our Fall Festival. I'll let Dr. Becker talk more about that. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to council members for reports, and go ahead and start with Mrs. Martine.
Oh, boy.
You can start.
Well, last Friday, I was coming up to the City Hall, and I noticed the new signs. I'm just really pleased with those signs in Central Park area, they look wonderful. Maybe we could go back and put it on the other side also, so you could see it from going from both ways. Now, I haven't been over to Eagle Lake or those areas, I was just driving up through here, but they are really...did we put those up, or did the gentleman that's working for us?
Oh, we did, as a developer.
Very good. They're really nice. At least people know where the areas are. Last, I believe it was last week, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony at...for Factory Direct Copper and Granite LLC and South Central Kansas Economic Development Districts. There's two buildings, and they were ready, gung-ho, ready to go. In fact, they were doing groundbreaking that day, or moving a bulldozer, moving dirt, and we got through it with...right before the rain poured down. Also, Saturday, I was invited by a friend from Garter to attend their Fall Festival. I didn't ride in the parade or anything like that, but it was like from 8 till evening after...they had bingo at 7 o'clock to end up. It was a wonderful day, they had a little bit of everything, and their parade lasted for like an hour. I did get to tour City Hall. I had sausage and biscuits and gravy and juice for breakfast at 8 o'clock with the Lions Club. And then we went back at noon, or close to noon, and had pulled pork sandwiches and chips and two cookies with the Lions Club. And they had arts and crafts booths, and they had several things for the kiddos, but I think everybody in that town or around that town, because I believe Garter's smaller than we are, that town was full. And the city administrator told me, I said, "How did you guys get a Walmart?" And he said, "Well, because we kept pushing and we were..."They're the smallest county or city in Kansas or Cedric County," I forgot what he said, because I was excited about it. It's a superstore, and they're the smallest one in Kansas that has a superstore in their town. It was a very enjoyable day, and I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Garter has a population of 4,962.
Yeah.
It's almost half the size of Bel Air. I don't have a report, Mr. Mayor, but I do have an observation and a question. At 45th and Webb, at our monuments, at the Bel Air Monument, it had, did have a piece of rust and then a streak running down it, and that is gone. And I'm curious as to what the cause was and how it was eradicated.
You know, I don't know. We'll have to, I'll have to ask and see if somebody did something, or if it was just something that came out of that.
Has anybody else seen that?
It was at, are you sure, wasn't it 45th and Rock? Because it had the...
What did I say? I said Webb, I'm sorry, wrong. It was wrong.
Yes, yes, I was going to say, because every time I'd see it, and I think they cleaned it off, because...
Oh, you did.
I didn't clean it, but I think they did.
Off the ass.
Because I agree with you, Mr. McDonald, it looks wonderful now.
It does, yeah.
Well, thank you to whoever did that.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to say.
I'm glad you said that, because I thought that.
Ms. McDonald?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to thank you for this certificate, and I appreciate it. I totally didn't do it for that, but I am honored that you guys did that, and I want to thank you for that. And I'm with you, I think it would be great every month to recognize someone that goes above and beyond. I did want to say that, I have to go down Edgemore every day, and I am very pleased with how quickly that construction is going. I know the residents there have talked to me a lot, because you do have to make a circle around. I have to come home now off of 45th, and you know, cars are parked everywhere, but you know, they thought it'd be done in three weeks, and I think it's going to be before. So I'm really pleased with the progress there. And then, of course, it's going to start the next three weeks, and then the next. And then, the only other thing, I wanted to make sure you guys all read, because I know we have some trouble with maybe getting our, some of our emails. The SCAC meeting for Saturday was canceled because of the league. I saw that today, because I had, was thinking about maybe trying to go, but it is canceled for the 10th. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Becker?
Okay, I just wanted to note, I think some of you may have read this, but nobody said anything, so I'm going to note that Bel Air's official population as of July 2015 is 7,284, and I just think that's wonderful. It just shows how much we're growing and all the good things that are going on here. It's just wonderful that we've experienced this much growth in the last few years. I also wanted to mention, I'm looking forward to attending the Kansas League of Municipalities in Kansas City this weekend, because you always increase your knowledge when you go to these conferences like this, and there's so many current issues that are affecting all the cities in our state, and so it's good to go and learn and share with other cities. Yes, I will remind people again of the Fall Festival coming up on the 17th of October, that's a week from this coming Saturday, and it's going to be from 10 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon at our rec center. There will be a car show associated with it, and there's a special little flyer for that. Everybody loves car shows. There's going to be a petting zoo, games, food, vendors, face painting, a bouncy house, health, free health screenings, and is the Lions Club going to do that, Mr. McDonald?
I believe so, yes.
Yes. Music, food, everything fun and wonderful. So I hope we have beautiful weather that day, and I hope everybody will put that on their calendar for the 17th, Saturday, from 10 till 2. That was just another reminder for that. I also wanted to mention, I attended, also attended the groundbreaking on September the 19th at Sunflower Commerce Park, and our council president, Guy McDonald, did a great job of welcoming the new construction for buildings there that will house two new enterprises, and I just wanted to name them. The Factory Direct Copper and Granite LLC and the South Center Kansas Economic Development District. So those are two wonderful additions to our park out there. I also wanted to note that Saturday, I visited a couple of the 16 Bel Air homes that are listed in the Parade of Homes this year. That is an outstanding number, and it's far above any of the other cities in this area around Wichita. So I think we can be real proud of that. I attended the official Irongate Neighborhood Grand Opening that morning on Saturday. It was fabulous, the radio station was there, and they had some of the best donuts I've ever seen in my life. They were real interesting and beautiful, and so that was a lot of fun. And I just want to encourage everybody to get out and go see these new homes in our area.
Don't just see them, buy one.
Yeah, and buy one. We have...
After you, we're first.
Yeah, we have a wide range of different prices, and I will tell you that over there in Irongate, in the model homes, you will see the most beautiful bathrooms and kitchens and basements that you have ever seen. They're so unique and just gorgeous finishes, everything is nice. But we do have a lot of homes on the Parade of Homes all over town, up here in our new addition, I should say, the new building, and so we can really be proud of that. And another thing I want to say, following up on all this great building that's going on and everything, I just want to reiterate and emphasize something I said last week, and that is that this entire council is pro-growth, and we are for planned development in the city of Bel Air. Everybody on this council feels that way, and that's strongly evident by our consistent progressive voting record for all types of issues. I do want to point out, though, that our city does have zoning regulations, and this council has a responsibility to protect the exceptional quality of life for our citizens here in the city. And we must weigh the benefit of every project that comes before us on the merits of the applicant and the profits of outside companies versus the harm that might be done to longtime Bel Air neighborhoods and homeowners and families in those neighborhoods. Bel Air is a city that is only, not only progressive, but a city that takes care of its citizens and will not sacrifice the sanctuary of peaceful, beautiful, safe, family-friendly neighborhoods for any arbitrary profits of out-of-state companies who might want to plow in here and encroach on or profit at the expense of longtime protected residential neighborhoods and the quality of life for our Bel Air families. So we're a very balanced community, we're pro-growth, and yet we take care of our neighborhoods and the people of our city, and I think we can all be proud of the job we're doing in being balanced, fair, and taking care of everybody.
Excellent report, thank you so much. And with that, we will now move to the city managers' report.
I have a few items, Mayor. Couple things happening next Saturday here in town. The, there is a blood drive here at City Hall, and it will be from 8 to noon, so if anybody's interested in giving blood, please call the Red Cross and get that scheduled, and I'm sure if you just showed up, they'd probably be okay with that as well. But I know they're asking for appointments. Also, the brush site's open next Saturday from 9 to 1, so if anybody's doing any fall trimming, needs to get rid of their brush, the brush site will be open. Another thing that was exciting, just received a letter yesterday, that the city won an excellent and concrete paving award from the American Concrete Paving Association for the roller-compacted reconstruction we did at 45th Street. So we were recognized for using roller-compacted concrete to rebuild that street, so we won an award for that. And their annual conference is in, I believe it's Florida, so if you'd like me to go and pick that up.
You're going to drive it all the way back from Florida.
Yeah, but that's up to you.
That's up to you, Mr. Lash.
Yes. Also wanted to let you know that the city received a letter back from the U.S. Secretary of Transportation regarding the letter of support that you all sent them for the Wichita Tiger Grant. And basically, it said that they had received the letter and that they plan to announce the winners this fall. So it was nice to get a letter from them stating that they had heard from you all. And then, another letter received this week was from the Wichita Cedric County Metropolitan Planning Department, and you probably remember, they were the ones being asked by the county to do away with the zoning area of influences, and this council approved sending a letter in opposition of that. So what the Metropolitan Planning Council did was that they voted to keep the zoning area of influences to meet the boundaries, growth boundaries that the cities have. So, and there's actually, I think it's called the 2035 Urban Growth Map that the Metropolitan Planning Department creates, and then it identifies that, that growth area. So it's an actual map that, that may actually reduce some, some cities had huge amounts of area, and it may have reduced that to down to their growth. But, and then it goes to the, back to the county later on this month, so, but that's all I had, Mayor.
Wonderful, lots of great reports tonight. All right, we will move on now to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first item that comes before council is consideration of an ordinance changing for the zoning classification from C1 to R5. This is in La Sae Heights, second addition, it's a cul-de-sac of duplexes there to the west of La Sae Heights and the northeast Magnet School. The current zone is C1. I think you guys can see a map up there, and even though the duplexes are allowed in C1, the developer would like to downgrade the zoning to protect the cul-de-sac from commercial development and maintain it so that it stays for multifamily in R5. We did hold a public hearing on September 10th. The planning commission meeting went, went over it and approved it, and staff also supports this zone change, so I would recommend that we do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Becker.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from C1 to R5 on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Yeah, first and second, are there any questions or comments? Since it is an ordinance, it is a roll call. David Austin, I vote aye. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
And it passes. And I like that idea of protecting it from the multifamily.
Definitely.
Kind of like what Ms. Becker was saying earlier.
Right.
And we have another ordinance, which is a utility easement vacation. I always say that word, vacation, I think of other things. The owners of these three lots, which are along Baton, they'd like to vacate the utility easement between lots two and three, this is to allow for larger homes. All utility companies were notified, and again, a public hearing was held at the September 10th Planning Commission meeting. Vacation was partially approved by the planning commission, so the city and West Star can keep a portion, which is important, so that we still have that access. Staff is comfortable with the partial vacation, and I would also recommend council approve this as well.
What hundred block is that, Mayor?
Um...
What hundred block is that?
I don't know the exact...
Oh, okay.
Well, I looked that up on a Google map.
Okay.
And it almost looks like a dead-end street that goes on, actually past Dr. Bro's house, if you know where he lives.
Right.
And it's very logical to do this, as far as I can see, and...
Oh, I just wondered, I know right where it is now.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great thing. It's kind of south of Eagle Lake.
Right.
I thought Dr. Bro lived on Harding.
But...
He does.
Oh, it's up to Baton? Okay.
Will it intersect, I mean, you know, like Baton goes east-west and Harding's north-south, right?
It's close in that same area, this is close in that same area.
Isn't it?
It's...
No? Okay, never mind.
I don't think so.
I'm not sure which street Dr. Bro lives on.
He's on Harding.
He's on Harding.
Okay, that's right.
But I know where this is now.
Yeah, it's right in that neighborhood.
I know.
Like Ms. Becker said, we only have 7,000 people there. Come on!
We got nowhere everybody lives.
She said he lived on Baton, I thought, uh-uh. He bought Bill Cox's house.
Well, again, I'll move to a... Well, again, I'll move to approve an ordinance vacating 45 foot of an existing utility easement on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Questions or comments? This ordinance also calls for a roll call. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
All right, and it passes. Discussion of future issues, I have nothing else except for where we do need to schedule a workshop.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I do have something. We've had some recent technological difficulties, and consequently, we are missing some recording, video recordings of our sessions here, and I'd like to make a motion to have all council sessions recorded by a separate audio recorder, so that if we do have a problem again with the video, that we do have a written, a verifiable record of what was said at the council, instead of having to, you know, go back and look at our notes and then reconstruct what we said. I think that's a much more intelligent way to operate.
And staff is already booked, if I understand, at having audio recording done?
Yes.
Which is going right now, so we've actually already started it.
I'll go ahead and second his motion.
Is that part of the, of the video?
So, it's on tape.
It's separate, okay.
Yeah, so we have an audio recording that is separate from the one, but I don't know if we need to approve that or vote on that, do we just...
It's fine if, because there is a motion second, some action needs to happen.
Okay. Yeah, I see. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, great idea. We gotta go, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if, if it was streamlined, though, two, three weeks ago, and I had several people, were they here that heard it? Was it not streamlined? Were people not watching it live?
Yes.
They were.
It was on live.
That's what I thought, that those, okay.
But it's taped, yeah.
Right.
But we can't replay it because it's...
I agree, but can't you get that out of a computer that had that? That can't they, they can't?
They called Cox.
I thought everything you ever watched is encrypted into your computer.
No, we called Cox to see if they had any way of doing it, and they didn't. We asked for citizens if anybody may have DDR'd or something like that.
Okay.
It went out live.
Right, I just figured that if people had it watched on their laptop, that you'd be able to retrieve that.
No, because the streaming actually takes place after it's been taped, and it's the website streaming, so that streaming has not been streamed on our website.
Okay.
But it was live.
Okay, I thought...
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if maybe the Bell Air Center news gentleman, because I noticed when we have visitors that go up to the podium, he takes a little recorder up there, he may have the whole thing.
He has a recorder.
You'd, oh, he didn't, okay, sorry.
Okay. That's too bad.
That doesn't happen again, so...
Okay, thank you.
But again, back to future issues, we do need to schedule a workshop for October, and... I'm trying to incorporate here. This upgrade, which was supposed to make everything easier, now I can't find it.
Same thing happened to me.
Okay, so, but looking at Wednesday, October 14th, or Thursday, the 15th, if that would work, a lot of us are going to be at the league conference on Monday, and Allison is not available on Tuesday, and we'd like to have her attend this workshop, which leaves Wednesday, the 14th, or Thursday, the 15th of October.
Wednesday would really work better for me.
Wednesday?
Yeah, Thursday's not a good day, Mr. Beck, that's when Iron Gate is having its open house from 4 to 7.
Call.
Wednesday's okay for Thursday.
We've got two Wednesdays that are okay.
I'm getting it either day.
You got three okays on Wednesday?
I can't either day.
You can't on either one of those, okay?
I can do Monday or Tuesday.
What time is that Iron Gate thing?
4 to 7.
Is there a chance that one would work better than another, or...
She can do it when?
Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, but not Wednesday or...
We will be here Monday.
I know.
We'll be coming back.
Okay. Well, I think the majority is going to be Wednesday.
Can you do it really early, Wednesday, before church?
How early is really early?
Like, 4?
Can we do a 4 o'clock one? On, on Wednesday, the 14th?
If I could leave by 6, I could...
Oh, I would imagine it's not going to be a super lengthy one.
Well, if it's an hour, then I could do 5 to 6. I have to leave by 6 to get to church.
Want to split the difference at 4:30?
Can you guys do that early?
That's okay.
Allison, does that work?
Yes, that works.
Let's do 4:30 on Wednesday, the 14th.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Glad we're able to do that. And next, would like a, would like to ask for a 30-minute executive session for attorney, client relations, and invite in the city manager, city attorney, as well as Marlon Penner.
So, who?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at 7:36.